All right, the next item on the agenda is the elementary school building project update. The elementary school building project passed at town meeting on May 6th and will go before all of the registered voters of the town on Tuesday, July, excuse me, June 11th in a special election. I would like to thank the project team, especially the Building Committee Chair TJ Rucupero, Carl Franceschi and Courtney Southwick of DRA, Tim Bonfati, Chin Lin and Eric Rubin of Vertex, and Dr. Baeda for preparing and presenting the project to town meeting, as well as our most recent community forums on May 21st, which are now available for viewing on SMAC and the elementary school project webpage. I'd also like to thank the Select Board for their vote on May 7th to authorize the special election, and Town Hall, especially the Office of the Town Clerk for making this special election happen. Thank you to everyone who's asked questions and offered feedback and comments on the project so far, and we're very grateful to the town meeting members who supported moving the project to its next step. I've asked the elementary school building project team to come tonight to explain their updated tax impact to us and to answer any questions the school committee may have before the special election. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Rucupero, whenever you're ready, TJ.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you here, through the audience. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
We're good.
Thank you. So, we have been since fall submitting an estimate, oh, great.
Sorry. Let me try that again. That's right. Google doesn't like me.
Sorry, hold for technical difficulties.
Let me try.
Try it wrong.
Just the window. How about this?
There we go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Since that time, two things have happened. First of all, and I think they have been pretty much around the same time, because I have been checking DOR's website pretty regularly, and they updated the numbers, let's call it year 2024, pretty recently. Additionally, about seven days, April 30th, so about a week before town meeting, the town had a public meeting with its financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, and Hilltop had run a more accurate estimate of the impact for taxpayer based on a formula of factoring, current borrowing rate, current climate, and, you know, we, I actually sent an email to the town to call just to confirm that this was an estimate, you know, foundational components that went into it, and that came out to an estimated tax impact of 61 cents per thousand dollars of property valuation. So what we initially had estimated, estimated back in the fall, was based on an average home price in the town of Stoughton, about $475,000. And for our project, we estimated high because we had nothing, we were doing it ourselves. We didn't want to come in low and have someone accuse us of gaming numbers, so we estimated high. We came in at about $400 per taxpayer, based on a borrowing scheme that we ourselves choose our, let me take the blame off for everyone else, that I chose, I select 20-year calculation. So now that we had real numbers, right before town meeting, we've calculated down to a more accurate estimate, so based on 61 cents per thousand factor that Hilltop Securities provided the town, and with the additional new numbers on the average home value from DOR of $524,466, which you see on your screen, we updated the numbers so that we're producing the most accurate information for the taxpayers. That gives the average taxpayer an impact of $318 per year, and that would amount to an increase of 4.79%. Does all that make sense? Can I also, Madam Chair, can I also say, there are, I have seen a flyer that was stuck on my front door that said that there was a 6.4% increase from this project. That was, that was using, I think, Hilltop Securities' estimate based on the numbers that we were using a year ago. So it's a combination of two flawed numbers now, or at least one flawed number, reaching a 6.4% increase, which is not correct. It's 4.79, and that's, it's an estimate and always will be, but that's about as accurate as anybody can get.
Thank you. Are you ready for questions from the committee, or do you have, would you like to continue?
Welcome questions. Carl Franceschi is here. Courtney Southwick also, I think, Tim Bonfati, if he's not online, maybe on his phone also.
Does anybody have questions? I know I have a few that I've gotten from the public. Does anybody have a question?
Yeah, so I have a comment and then a question. So first, I wanted to say thank you for putting the tax calculator together. I actually plugged my homes assessed value into that, and the number was much lower than what I was expecting, which was a nice surprise. I don't have a very new house or a very large house, so like, your mileage may vary, but I just, that was a very helpful tool, I found. So thank you for that. And then I also just had a quick question, something I've been hearing from folks that is connected to what's on the slide that's up right now, or that was just up, sorry, with the guaranteed funding from the MSBA. I just wanted to get clarity on that, because I think there is a misunderstanding that the MSBA doesn't guarantee the funding to, for their share of the project. So just wanted to see if you could speak to that a little bit, how that works, just to clarify, I think, a misunderstanding that's out there.
I can answer that, or Carl, if you want to, and do you have to?
I can start, TJ. The MSBA gets its funding from a sales tax, as many of you know. And before they invite a community into the pipeline for a project, they, in essence, earmark a certain amount of their funds for that project, well in advance of the project. And then when we get to this stage where the town is committed to do the feasibility study, has been reimbursed for their portion of that, but has now reached the schematic design submission where a project funding agreement can be signed between the town and the MSBA, that's, I guess in political terms, is close to a guarantee as you get. It is a pay-as-you-go system, but the money is there. The meaning that it's the 47 million is not quote-unquote guaranteed means you might not need 47 million. This, like the high school, came in under budget, so you never reached the maximum grant that Stoughton was entitled to, so to speak, there. And, you know, the same could happen here. If change orders are few and there are no changes in scope, you may not need all 47 million. But if you, if you do expend all the way up to the 114 million project cost, and the MSBA has committed 47 million to reimburse the town. So as I say, in political terms, that's as close to a guarantee as you get. And we've been doing this ever since the MSBA was formed. We are not aware, I'm pretty, in high degree of probability, can say that there's never been a project that hasn't been funded once it's been approved, like Stoughton has been approved here.
Awesome. Can I just add that I have seen the agreement? It just came, right, what is it? I was trying to finish dinner, so if the agreement exists, I will be signing it shortly. So that, it is, it lays out pretty clearly what the, what the town is going to receive as a part of that. It asks that it be reviewed by the town's legal counsel, so it's very thorough, and it is pretty binding that the MSBA will have that money, you know, to us. So it's not, sometimes, it's not like the Chapter 70 funding where numbers just seem to float around. It's actually quite late, quite clearly laid out on a piece of paper that will be signed.
Thank you.
And it is fixed. It does not depend on a vote each year, on the budget, or anything like that. Your reimbursement rate is fixed and embedded in that project funding agreement and so forth. So it's not under there coming forward.
Awesome. Thank you, Carl.
Anyone else have questions? Come on, Armando.
I have some questions, but several, so if anyone else asks questions before me, that would be great.
Go ahead.
Okay. I got questions from neighbors and people just put me in the street. One of it is that will the proposed elementary school look or feel like a vacation resort in Florida?
I know you want to answer that, TJ.
I'm not sure what that's referring to. The building is meant to, 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 one, you know, satisfy the educational program and fit into the context of Stoughton and setting, you know, on this particular site. You know, there is a requirement for a building to last 15 years in the MSBA program. Your current schools have all lasted that long, and so that's clearly what's in the future. So we want to obviously choose materials and systems that are durable, you know, low operating costs, low maintenance costs, and so forth, so, but in no way does that make it, you know, luxurious or gold-plated or anything like that.
It's a school.
It's a school, and it's consistent with other schools being built. Not that it looks like some other school necessarily in terms of the aesthetics, but in terms of, you know, the materials and the budget, it is very comparable to other elementary schools being proposed and being constructed right now in Massachusetts.
Another question is, this is a dual school, two schools in one, and I was wondering if you can give us an estimate or some numbers as to how much or how less it would cost to build one school as opposed to building two schools, short term and long term, including finding a site or demolishing one, which may require modules to put the kids in before moving them in? Just a general, how much would it cost, what we're doing now compared to what some of the suggestions have been, building two smaller schools?
Well, certainly an economy of scale, building, you know, a school in the range that this one is, of 600 students or so, as has been mentioned, there's just one gym, there's just one library, there's just one kitchen, one cafeteria, one stage music room, you know. So just the building itself, if you were to basically, you know, divide this in half and build two 300 pupils schools, the size of those buildings would probably be in the vicinity of at least 15, perhaps 20% bigger than this one school is, in terms of square footage. And square footage translates into dollars pretty directly. So just with those major, you know, spaces, not needing to be duplicated, that's the, you know, economy of scale on the building side. And then likewise, there's an economy of scale in site development. We're bringing in one solar line, one water line, one new roadway. You'd have to, you know, duplicate that in another site for another project. So there's likewise economies of scale in the site work, too. So that, and then of course, if you, I don't know if you want to consider the present value of money or whatever, but if you're doing one school now, then one school in the future, that second school is going to be affected by escalation compared to days ago.
Can I, can I answer that to Carl? Sorry, and please, Carl, correct me if I mistake this, but I've gone through MSBA's recent projects, and we studied it on the building committee, and the average school these days is 630 students, four schools. So it's difficult for you to find a comparison for, what you say is one school, I'm assuming means the 225 student design capacity that MSB allowed us on the low end versus the 515 they allowed us on the high end. The smallest school you'll find over the last several years is, I think, Randolph at 315 students, and that's our current capacity at the self-school as of like last week. So it's been, if you, when you say one school versus two schools, first of all, it's difficult to find the one school to compare what we need to build, cost-wise, and second of all, we're, the average school these days is, I think I'm saying the same thing twice, is 630 students, so we're still below the average.
Okay, thank you. Another question, well, it concerns repairing the existing school. A lot of folks are still asking the question, why don't we just repair the school that we have now? And of course, looking at all these things, replacement of the roof, the electrical system, the plumbing system, installing a modern security system, you know, rectification of the playground hazards, heating system upgrades, additional facilities, space needed to accommodate special education and so on, provisions for adequate space and furniture, solutions to control, to fix the current traffic problem. And of course, a lot of people are confused about the ADA kick-in after you do certain repair, which will require you to do additional repair. That's really confusing if someone can just give us a fourth grade level explanation how that kicks in and how that cost can be substantially more than what people are thinking about.
Well, we actually did, as part of the feasibility study, look at what's called base repairs to fix things that are broken or that things that don't meet current standards or current codes. And those, pure construction costs, just identifying those elements, was north of $30 million. Then you have to figure all the soft costs to make that happen, you know, renting portable classrooms, because, you know, you have to make in the building at least a wing at a time to do the spoke of work that, you know, to do all new electrical, mechanical sprinklers, you know, light fixtures, finishes, and the ADA, you know, upgrades of trying to resolve the many ramps and levels in that building is extensive. And so, and trying to pick these things off one at a time, then capital repairs, the basic code principle that's in effect here is if during any three-year window of time you spend more than 30% of the assessed value of the building, then you need to bring the entire building up to code, you know, as one sort of project. So you can't even spread out these costs over 10 years or something like that, because any major project, the roof and say the windows, those two alone probably will trip the 30% threshold right there. And so you're into doing all the toilet rooms, all the ramps, all the accessibilities, every entrance into the classroom, and you're necessarily going to be affecting all the systems in the building. So it's a realistic number that, you know, we had two independent cost estimators looking at, who understand, you know, the cost of these systems and materials these days, and that's where it fell. We never got down to the detailed level of exactly how it would be done, how many months it would take, how many summers and years, and how many modules of classrooms exactly. But certainly, if, you know, if this vote failed, the town would have to go back to the drawing board and think about that exact issue, how does this building get renovated, if that's the only choice moving ahead.
Thank you. One of the, one of the aspects, actually, we had a previous superintendent here some months ago, and I was able to get an opportunity to speak with her, and one of the questions I asked, what would happen if the vote fails? What happens to MSBA? And the implication I got is that the MSBA may never, ever come back to Stoughton to fund any schools in the future. I know that's probably not their policy, but that's the indication I got from superintendent. I was wondering if Dr. Baeda can talk a little bit about that and what his thoughts are?
Yeah, so I mean, my history with the MSBA goes to, back to 2008, '09, in an effort to move forward a building, which took two years. Currently, there's one district which actually our OPM resides in, that they had a failed vote, and the process to, quote, "come back in" is just underway, if you will. There is no policy that says they're never coming back, you know, there's no such written document, but they're spending six, well into six figures worth of people and time and effort on these projects. I mean, one of the most important things about this, these projects is we have a control agency called the MSBA who invites you in after you write your statement about your building. Actually, prior to that, they came out to your building and graded it and said, oh, I wonder if this building ever comes forward, are they gonna, you know, they're gonna want a new building? That's the statement of interest that we did, and that my predecessors did. And then from there, it's a very vetted system. Please go to the MSBA site. Our meetings with the MSBA are on there. They're public meetings where they asked, they ask questions about our project. They asked about where it's being built, and, by the way, do you have the opportunity to add to the building if your enrollment increased down the road? And why do you need, they have very specific detailed square footage for what a classroom looks like. And we can try to do some pushing back. For example, I believe this is true, and TJ, correct me, the gymnasium, we wanted to make it a little bit bigger than your traditional-sized elementary gymnasium because of the sense of community and the use of community that we have with the town, not only athletics, but also other activities. So you follow a very vetted system. If you get to the end and the answer is no, you do restart the whole process. You can't just take the old approved plans and say, oh, here you go. You're looking at the whole process, and you're, the phrase "back of the line" might be the wrong phrase, but there are a ton of communities right now. We just went to a meeting with the MSBA for the approval, where there's a ton of communities that are coming into the system as we speak. And by the way, they already have other lists. I mean, the statement, the SOI statement will be available sometime between January and first, second week of March of this coming year. There'll be a whole other group of communities that want to come in. And the realization is that you're building a building that's going to last at least 50 years for the amount of students of taking one building offline. So you're taking a significant chance that, you know, you can do it out of, A, just borrowing, right? Just, let's just borrow and, you know, then pay back out of operating budgets, you know, to quote some of the folks. That's not sustainable from when you're asking for $30 million and $40 million. And we just did it with a project in town, the fire department, where it was a combination of the borrowing and exclusion. And the fact is that, you know, long-term, you see some of those, some of that impact on loans. For example, how much do you have to actually pay out in loans for 20 years or 30 years that's coming out of operational funds? And long-term, I worked in a community where town halls would be closed for certain days. You know, we'd only have part-time staff in the school department and the offices, all these things that you do, because you have to borrow so much money. So it's a big chance, you do get sent to the, quote, "back of the line." What that line is, could be three years out, five years out, it really depends on what the community brings forward that's changed. What they won't do, I guarantee you, is say, hey, would you like to do an accelerated repair? Hey, we'll give you some money for boilers. Hey, we'll give you some money. That is not happening. I can assure any taxpayer in the Commonwealth, including the resident, that will not happen, because they already have the reports from the pros, reviewed by their pros, that says revamping that building with MSBA money is not something we're willing to do.
Madam Chair? Oh, I think that was really well said by superintendent, I just wanted to add one thing. So I've thought about this a lot, because, you know, the Florida Resort was a resort that someone mentioned, that just runs under my skin square. And so I don't know what people would do different. Carl Franceschi will tell you that this design, while I think it's very attractive, it's also functional in the respect that it maximizes the incorporation of the education plan that MSBA approved, but it also minimizes the amount of non-reversible space. So what that means is it does more for us and gets us the most amount of money. So when someone says, you know, you're building my row lab, I'll go, no, we're building the building that is most functional and gets us the most dough from MSBA. And I don't know how someone comes back and does that better. I think they can, you know, go revisit everything that we did. I wish they'd just look at everything we did start to finish, and then decide that they could do something different. In this case, it's a wonderful-looking building for sure, but it's functional in so many respects to what your educational purpose is, as well as functional in, it's like structure, like, you know, the great wooden beams that I love so much in the building, you know, that's sort of thing that I go, those are structural, those things who serve a dual purpose. I'm going on too long, but then I think Dr. Baeda said it better than I ever can, but the point is, it's not an elaborate building in the respect that it's, that we're incorporating in all sorts of non-ense. What we incorporated allows us to take full advantage of the money that we're allowed to get by way of grant, and it also utilizes the space better than we ever could with any other design that the committee looked at for educational purposes.
I can think of another point, too, just to give you a couple of experiences in terms of districts that were, that had failed votes and that tried to get back in line. I only know of two that actually got back in line, and they were both in the realm of eight to 10 years from the failed vote to when they started up again. Because as was said, MSBA is looking for projects to invest in that they, you know, have a high open success to.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have just two more, madam. Well, this one's hard to quantify, but I was wondering what the impact would be actually on the children if we were to repair the self-school and they had to move into the modules, and of course, you probably cannot have recess because of the hazard wastes and construction going on on that same site.
going on on that same site. I don't know if the teachers want to comment on the impact of the children being stuck inside the school, being somehow barricaded or enveloped from the hazards while the construction would be going on in the South School?
Well, I can speak from experience of a high school renovation addition through the MSBA process, so not just using, not using that process. It is, at some point, months upon months of cafeteria being closed. There'd be no auditorium at the same time because it's a cafeteria. You're looking at bathrooms being closed. I've seen the porta-potties on-site. I've seen the modular classrooms on-site. I've seen no, in a high school, no science labs available for a year. I've seen classrooms that the technology can't be used because you've got to shut off certain parts of the building. For little children, we're talking kindergartners through fifth grade at the South School. I can't imagine it. I really can't. And I say that as your superintendent, but to be quite honest, if my child was in that grade, I'd be very concerned. And the concern is the amount of soft cost waste to the taxpayers that the project's going to have. We're going to be paying millions of dollars to a third party for modular classrooms. Why do we think that's better than building a building that for 50 years we can look at? To me, it's, and I get it, but, and I understand if it's difficult for folks to afford it. I understand that. And please do it like Ms. Kreckler did. Go on there and plug in your numbers and say to yourself, "Does this make more sense to me now than the number I heard before?" But recess, again, with young kids, we'd be very, very careful. The idea could be that we would be moving modulators to the DAR and/or the Gibbons. That is, that is probably because I, you've got to remember, you've got to connect to sewer, you've got to, or septic system. We have that at the middle school, for those of you who don't know. You're more than likely are going to have AC in those. You need heat. And you now have an open campus, which at the elementary level, I would have a lot of concerns about. Secondary, I'd probably have less concerns, but at the elementary. So your soft costs, the more bodies you're going to have to put out there, is money that we're literally giving to third parties to make millions while we could keep our own money and say, "I helped to pay for that."
Okay, thank you. Last question, I promise. Lindsay has used the calculator and I haven't yet, but one of the questions I've come across is that some people are looking at the market value of their home and using the four-something percent to calculate their taxes for the year. And I see that the building committee did a great job and went to assessed value, which is a big difference between what market value is and what assessed value is. And I was wondering if someone can explain the difference and talk to her about that so people aren't calculating the tax based upon the market value of their home?
So I can address that unless anybody wants to step on me, but so there are two different values. Assessed value is generally considered lower than the market value. Market value is what someone will pay for your property in a robust market, or strike that, in the current market, excuse me. The assessed value is based on what's called full and fair cash value, and that's what someone would pay for a property today if you needed to sell, is I think how it's calculated. So the, without market forces, the full and fair cash value is generally lower than the market value, but, you know, I imagine there's some occasion where it would be higher. I can't really say. I can say this, though, that if you look over the last year, the last year's average value of a home in Stoughton was about $475,000. This year, the average value is $521,000 and change. So over the course of the last year, the assessed value of property has increased about $45,000, $46,000. If you look over the last six or seven years, the time period where the town has been investing in capital projects, the high school, the Park Street Central project, the library, now the fire station, then I name another, but I mean, those are the big ticket items I can think of. You look at Stoughton's property values and they have increased significantly. What's interesting, if you drill down to the numbers, to the percentage that taxpayers pay as a percentage of the value of the property, that's decreased, as has the percentage that people pay of their income in real estate taxes has decreased. So what that means is, as the town has been investing in property, in capital projects in the town of Stoughton, property values have been increasing and they're keeping the benefit of that investment. They're actually paying less as a percentage than they were when we started investing in these projects. And that says something. And those aren't my numbers, those are GNOAR's numbers. You can go and pull them yourself, or if anybody wants to email me, I have all the spreadsheets. I'd be happy to send them along. So I mean, I take from that, people are fair to dispute me on this, that the investing in capital projects like the high school, like the fire station, and like certainly like this project, has accrued back to the taxpayer in the form of increased property values, which is, it's real money. People use that for retirement, they use that for college education, they use that for vacations and their own home upgrades. So it's nothing to sneeze at. The cynic would say that when your property value goes up, you pay more taxes on it. But the optimist would say, "I make money off of these projects because you are."
Thank you.
Chris, do you have any questions?
Hi, thank you so much again for updating this information. We really appreciate the fact that you are as responsive as you have been to new information coming in and the questions being asked and making sure the materials are reflective of that. So I appreciate that, and I encourage everyone at home to go in and look at the most recent slide deck to make sure that you have the most updated information possible. I wanted to verify something. I heard you say earlier that the consolidated school plan, the design that was selected was based on an education plan, and one of the questions I remember hearing from the community is whether or not staff have had an input. Can you just briefly touch on that a little bit in terms of how that's reflective in this design?
The education plan was written primarily by the principals, the two principals involved, the Wilkins and South. And they internally, interned, you know, gathered input from their staff. They also visited other elementary schools and so forth. So they were well informed as to what they wanted in the school, and obviously consulted with the superintendents and administration to construct the education plan, which talked about sets things as, you know, taking a case from five elementary school and guiding it to a lower school and an upper school so that the children are separated somewhat by age. This building does that sort of vertically. And it also does it by utilizing the floor plan where each wing of the building, each classroom wing of the building represents a grade, so that for the most part, again, enrollments can vary from year to year sometimes, but generally, you know, the entire first grade can be together, the third grade can be together, and not just in a long hallway mixing with other kids in other grades. And so the teachers of those students, obviously, can then collaborate and lesson playing together and so forth. So the building reinforces that with the teacher's room on each floor for the teachers to collaborate in grade level, you know, we call them classroom neighborhoods. There is also a lot of attention paid to special needs spaces and the proximity of student services, you might say, to the students. They're not all centrally located, you know, downstairs by the front door. They are distributed so that each classroom neighborhood has both full-size special needs classrooms, some small pull-out spaces where there's a student that needs a little extra help, immediately adjacent to that classroom, there's a small pull-out space. And then there's also specialists like speech and language and adjustment counselors that are distributed through the building to be closer to the kids as to where they are. So the plan, you know, is directly, you know, related to the education plan in that regard. And then just the third one, that the basic form of the building with having these wings, it's not just a square rectangle of a box, because it was strongly suggested that we want to define outdoor spaces and make them part of the school. And so by having wings, it sort of encloses those spaces and identifies them, one of them being the main entry, but the others being play areas and outdoor classrooms that are directly, you know, adjacent to the school and therefore incorporated, so to speak, into the curriculum. So those are some of the highlights, but there are numerous. I mean, the education plan, so I forget, 75 pages long or something like that. Talking about how teaching and learning wants to happen in the building, you know, does reflect all that.
And luckily, we have one of the principals who wrote the educational plan here, so do you have any thoughts on that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I can answer directly in terms of the involvement from the teachers and the staff. Prior to ever writing the educational plan, we had several focus groups, visioning sessions in which many, many staff members from both the Wilkins and the South School participated, and they provided us with their feedback that we then used to draft the educational plan, just in its most simple of answers.
Excellent. Thank you both so much for providing that additional layer of context. Few more questions. One, another community member asked in response to the growing student population size at all of the five elementary schools, had suggested, "Why not just expand the South and Wilkins?" Can you speak to that, please?
Well, there's a couple of challenges there. The first is just renovating the existing South to be suitable. You know, we talked about the challenges with that. So even to make that existing school appropriate for the 260, I forget, it keeps changing, it seems like week to week, I guess how many students are enrolled there, but to renovate that is going to reduce the capacity of the school. But then to expand the footprint, to add space, that is a very tight site. It's hemmed in by the topography, the sloping site. It doesn't have enough parking, it doesn't have enough circulation to safely go accommodate parent drop-off and buses. So to try and expand it was a losing battle, frankly. You know, they were adding square footage and taking away from the few site amenities that exist, the playgrounds, a little bit of green space behind the school relatively, and limited parking. It was a lose-lose kind of situation there trying to expand the existing building.
Perfect, thank you for that. I noticed in your "What Happens If Stoughton Votes No?" slide, I don't know if you want to advance to that slide or not, that you talk about fully renovating two K through five schools would equal the cost of one new construction consolidated project. Can you speak to that a little bit more? And are those costs truly equal given the MSBA grant that we would be getting for the new school project?
Yes, I guess the short answer is yes, that they're comparing, not the $114 million, they're comparing Stoughton's share of the cost, so of the new elementary school, the $66 million that Stoughton would be, you know, required to fund for this project. That the renovation of the two existing schools, we're each in the realm of $40 million or so. So together, that's $80 million compared to the $66 million for, you know, the one consolidated new school. That's, those are the numbers being compared. The one sort of asterisk there is, as we've said a few times, the cost to renovate each of the schools is not as well and as fully developed as the plans are for this new school. As was said, we haven't figured out exactly, how would we renovate these buildings? Where would we put them onto it? What, how many phases would it take to do it? So it was compared at the conceptual level, but for order of magnitude costs, it's still valid that if you were to renovate both those buildings, it would exceed Stoughton's portion of the cost of this one new school.
So if I understand correctly, the cost of the consolidated building would be less than renovating the two existing elementary schools to the town and would also alleviate overcrowding issues within the district, which would not be the case if we renovated the two existing elementary schools?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Finally, I love that you put this slide together. Can you walk us through the "What Happens If Stoughton Votes No?" slide and the impact of a no vote?
Sure, I guess I can start. TJ can, superintendent can go in. But certainly, like we said, the very first thing is that the state funding, that $47 million, is no longer available. And to try and, you know, revise the project, come up with a different project or something like that, could take, as we said, eight to 10 years to get back into the program and get a new grant for a comparable new school. And the need to maintain the existing buildings, that, you know, becomes the challenge. You can't just ignore it. So the vote no is not a vote for zero cost. There'd be significant cost to do that deferred maintenance on the building, particularly on South. And as we just talked about, to address any of the significant issues, the roof and the windows, just to pick two, is likely to trip the threshold to have to renovate the entire building. And so you're back up to, you know, $35 to $40 million to do the entire project to renovate that building. So that, you know, not that it's automatic, but as soon as you try to do something there, you're going to trip that threshold relatively soon. It doesn't happen the day after the vote, you know, and obligate the town to do that. But certainly, you know, to maintain the parity of facilities throughout the town, something has to be done in South. And as we said, just postponing anything these days, the construction costs will escalate. So if a new study is needed and a new, you know, plan of attack to take on a renovation kind of project, takes another year to plan or something, and then another vote, you know, a year from now or something, costs are going to escalate compared to, you know, what they cost today.
Can I add two quick points to what Carl said? I don't know if you've finished, Carl.
That's good, I hit the high points. Go ahead.
I know. I wanted to drill down on a couple of things that have come up online, what is the concept of deferred maintenance? Because it makes it sound like at least the people who have been responding online, like that's, that term means neglected maintenance, and that's not the correct term, that's not the correct way to look at it. The deferred maintenance, I look at like throwing good money down the black hole because it makes more sense to look at it. Actually, it says this in the 2010 and in every update from the Facilities Master Plan, and essentially says, you know, you should be looking at a new building. For perspective, Carl mentioned that just new windows or new interior doors would trigger a full NDA compliance. Just for perspective, that building is assessed at $3.9 million. I just pulled up the estimate for base repair, which Carl told you was, it was formulated by two independent cost estimators who reconciled any differences and came up with one estimate, which isn't even a final estimate because if we were to do the project, as Carl said, we'd have to do more hard planning and hard design. But just the window systems alone, 20%, as I read this, is $1.6 million, just to do the windows. Now, maybe that qualifies under the accelerated Now, maybe that qualifies under the accelerated repair program with MSBA. Doesn't matter, it's over the 30% threshold, that means, Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's over the 30% value, which 30% of 3.9 million is 1.17 million, anything that we do to either one of those buildings, because the value of the base repair of both the South and the Wilkins was almost identical, if I remember right. So anything in the $1.2 million area for a repair of those buildings would trigger full ADA compliance of each of those individual buildings. So we, we can't do fixed piece, if this were rejected, the, the consequence of voting no is not base repair, it's a full rental project, and then it's probably a full ad rental, because again, correct me if I'm wrong, Carl, but if those, those buildings ADA compliant, you'll probably lose some classroom space. You could need to do things like widen doorways and hallways and create more.
And, and other rooms.
Right? So you'll, so you'll end up with base repair less than what you have now for two buildings that are right now at capacity. Sorry, I, I get in the middle of a piece.
That, that is extremely helpful context, and I really appreciate those additional data points.
Base repair is not an option.
Right. So what I'm hearing is a no vote does not mean the taxes will not be raised. Taxes will be raised, but we will not have a new building to show for it.
No, you're gonna have to bring a new project to MSBA, and as again, Carl mentioned, the only two examples he goes off, and he's got more experience than anybody in this forum, online or in person, was eight to 10 years. So if you're looking at bringing another new project, you're bringing as superintendent by Edison, you gotta bring something different, and you gotta solve the same questions and issues, because, you know, as, as I said in the last two forums, I pointed this out, I don't think, we're not bringing a project, we're bringing a solution to the MSBA and asking for a grant to solve a problem. That's how the MSBA regs read. It's a preferred solution to a facility's problem that we have. Some of that's my words, but the regs speak of solution and not a project. I think that's significant, actually. You still need to solve the problem if you vote no.
Thank you so much.
Karen, do you have any questions?
No. I'll try to be brief. I'm gonna zero in on two areas that I've gotten some questions about. One is the, our confidence in this, we have this cap of $114 million, $113 million was voted at town meeting because we've already spent $1 million on the feasibility study. But can you speak a little bit more to, we talked about, we have the two independent cost estimators come in. Can you speak to a little bit more about the construction manager at risk and how that's gonna help play into making sure that, excuse me, that we're on time and under budget, and any other factors that confirm that this is our hard limit? We're not going to be coming back in two years saying, "Oops, we overspent the budget." I know that we, I know, I know the answer, but if you could explain to, to some of the people who might have questions about how we know.
Carl, I think starting, I guess, TJ, we've simplified the cost a great deal by putting it on one slide here, but there's a lot of backup that goes into the numbers. And within that total budget of 114 million, we should think of it as, as a turnkey cost. It includes the hard costs, so to speak, of construction, you know, the actual site work and excavation and concrete and steel and, and windows and so forth, the so-called hard costs. But it includes appropriate kinds of allocations for the soft costs. That includes furniture equipment and fees, but most of all, it includes contingencies. So it is, it is allowing for, you know, escalation. It notes that this project is not gonna start construction tomorrow. It, it's, you know, a couple years or a year and a half away or something to get to the midpoint of construction, when, you know, the actual bid will be in and so forth. It includes contingencies for unknowns, you know, when we put a shovel in the ground, we've done a lot of, of research, but there, there could always be some surprises there. So there's appropriate levels of contingencies there. And we will have three more cost estimates done before we actually start construction. So with each of those, we have checkpoints that we can confirm that we're still on budget. And if for some reason something has changed, we have time to, to still maneuver and, and get it back on track before we start construction. And so it's a, it's a formula that has been used a lot, and then on top of it, as was mentioned, is the, the notion of using a construction manager at risk who, who will join us shortly here while we're still in design, assuming the project goes ahead here, and will contribute to doing cost estimates, as I say three more times, before we actually start construction, along with our independent cost estimator. So there's a good check there, and, and the construction manager, the firm that's actually gonna build it, has subcontractors and, and connections to the marketplace for material costs and so forth, so it's very realistic. And again, just in general, our track record, the high school was not unusual in, in the sense of coming in under budget. We, we, the team collectively has, has generally proven track record, and MSBA's, you know, grant is, is a maximum. They're not gonna go up, and, and we all take that very seriously, that the total project budget will not go up either.
Thank you. Last question, and then a little bit of a high note, assuming this, the voters vote yes. When would residents see the tax increase? Some people seem to think that they would get a bill June 12th for some money. And the other one would be, you know, how, how would that change over time as their assessed home values change? Would their tax impact change? Would they see a higher taxes if they, you know, finish their bathroom renovation or they add it on to their house, or just market fluctuations? How would that affect that?
Well, I can say on the construction side, and TJ, you can say on the tax side, on the, on the revenue side, the cash flow is not gonna, you're not gonna go out and borrow 66 million, 114 million, you're not gonna, but you're not gonna borrow 66 million on June 12th. The next year is always just in design and, and a little bit of site prep perhaps, the real borrowing is not gonna happen for at least another year. And then even that, you're gonna borrow in, in portions of this. So, you know, the first one might be 30 million, and then 20 million, and then a final of 10 million or something like that over the next three to four years. And, and so the, the tax impact of paying back the, you know, the interest on that is gonna vary, but the rates also could vary, right, TJ, depending on when you do the borrowing.
Right, with the high school, they did borrowing with London Tranches as needed, but I suspect this would be the same, but they also, I know this from speaking with the, the town accountant at the time, although it's town treasurer that does the borrowing, that they also tried to hit rates when they were best, so they sort of played the market when it came to borrowing. And then there was a point somewhere in 2017 or 18 where the then current town manager spoke with the current town financial advisor and got a pretty good deal on packaging the, the past borrowing and refinancing everything into a current package, so all those tranches were consolidated into a better rate. So I think if you, if you look at the debt presentation that Hilltop puts together back on April 30th, I think you'll see that the bulk of the high school debt is fully payable or fully paid in 2038, and that's because it's calculated back to 2007, 2018 or '19. I mean, there was a couple years ago of the project, is what I was saying, it was a compounding, so. So I, I really can't edit it, I think Carl, he hit it, you know, at all the points that I, but it will fluctuate. Estimates that we're given are based on current conditions, they could fluctuate up or down, but I, I think they're, I think they do take into account, I can't speak for Hilltop, but they do take into account what they anticipate the market to be like also.
Thank you. Any last questions, comments? All right. Again, I want to thank the team for presenting, for coming and presenting to us. Again, you can find the tax calculator on the website if you go to Stoughton Schools and look for the New Elementary Project webpage. You can find the tax calculator and all sorts of other information there, including copies of these slides. It's a great tool. Again, you're looking at your assessed home value, not what Zillow says, because you will get a different value for that. But again, appreciate that. If you have any questions, you can go to that website and email us questions, somebody from the project team will answer you. If you have a community group and you would like the project team to come and present to your community group before the vote, get your, email us, and we'll come and talk to you about that. Anything else to add, Mr. Rickabro?
I'll be right back. Thank you, Chair, and through you to your committee.
All right, thank you very much, thank you for your time tonight. All right, so, thank you.